We call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge, please. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thank you. Amendments to the agenda.
I have a couple, one under executive session that we have, one DSA 313A1 to add. It's an executive session with counsel to receive advice concerning Louis Lane.
That's not what's there, a different one?
It's just an explanation that it's a session with counsel to receive advice concerning Louis Lane.
Jim Carroll wanted a better explanation than just...
Of what was there.
Just what was there, yeah.
And I'm going, I'd like to add personnel, one DSA 313A4 to discuss the brush on Scotch Hill.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those amendments are, is there anything else? Okay, anybody else?
Now, the first one that she said is the longer call, right here?
Yeah, it's just a better explanation that are more defined. Okay, approval of the minutes September 8th.
I'll make a motion to prove the minutes of September 8th that 2020 is written.
Second?
I'm checking it.
Second?
I did one. On the sand bids, should we have put in there a completion date? All it says is just, I mean, we didn't do it a completion date, I'm just asking if we should put in a completion date.
True.
So we don't get it in the middle of November, October, December.
Under new business, the first.
It was under new business for sand bids, where we approved the sand bid.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering that we should have put a completion date on there?
No.
So we don't get it later, we want to make sure we get it in before the end of October.
Yeah, but then if they need more sand after December, then we would have had that completed. Like if we move into January, no, I don't think so.
Well, I just want to make sure we get what we've ordered before the end of October.
Yeah, and it's coming in now.
Okay, alright.
I think you're okay.
I wasn't sure if we should have done that or not.
So we don't need it?
Nope.
Well, we can make that in the regular, we can make that as a recommendation, yeah.
I just want, you know, so, okay, that's all I have.
Anything else, anyone? All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed? Thank you. Alright, five minutes for public comment. John?
Uh, West Creek Cemetery, the gate on the north side. I've repaired that, Bob and your mother were still living on West Creek. And it's cracked again and the water getting down into it, it's going pretty bust. And I just noticed it come back over, over the weekend. And it's going after, it could have probably not this year, but it's going to have to wait a bit here. Probably somebody on the town can put a plastic bag or some kind of什么东西for the winter, keep the water over it. There's a lot of getting down inside it, it's going to get inside and freeze and pop it open.
Can you ask somebody to look at that?
We'll take a look.
It's all light off.
Anyone else? Okay, we are going to move along, if somebody thinks of something, interrupt. Department heads.
I think you're just stuck with me today.
Well.
Congratulations.
What with the...
Oh, I do get, so I do get weekly reports from the, from our department heads. We'll start with superintendent. He's, we got a complaint about the dip on Washington Street. I guess we did a water line repair. They couldn't remember how far back, but it was before Mr. Durfee's time. That is State Highway Road right there, the dip is, apparently it's getting worse across from the bank. I'm going to reach out to the state and see if they can't get that, get that paved for, paved for us. If not, we'll look into doing something up there, we don't want to have any more troubles in there.
Where is this?
Across from People's Bank.
Just before you get the, uh, shots.
Uh, we'll probably talk a little bit about this later, but work on Scotch Hill is continuing. Winter sand is being delivered next week. They're prepping, DBW's prepping trucks right now for the, for the winter weather, getting the plows on, making sure everything's greased up, working, ready to go. The Griffith Sign Road, I'm not sure if I told the board, those came in, or it came in. As soon as they finish with Scotch Hill, we'll start picking away at a few other things. Griffith, the Griffith Sign Road is up, as well as some no parking signs that have just been missing for a while. We continue to work way, chip away at the water meters. It's going to come a time where we're not going to be able to schedule anymore, though. It's, uh, it's getting harder and harder. And sewer, there's the Academy Street and Adam Street Pump Station. There's a few upgrades that need to be done there. Working, Aaron's working with wastewater to pull in some quotes. We'll, uh, we'll bring that to the Board of Selectmen when we have firm numbers and what kind of work needs to be done. Oh, for the police, we, we had a little bit of damage up on Airport Road. Looks like somebody didn't quite take the turn as they were going up towards the airpark, put the car through the wood fence. We did get a, a police report started on it, and the police chief is working with Ms. Kendall to look at her video surveillance. They did notice the debris on Scotch Hill, and that was reported, I've been working with the police and DPW about that. The police are going to, the chief uses the word, obtain three new LiDAR handheld speed measuring devices and four boxes of road flares. This is through the Governor's Highway Safety Program. The chief says traffic seems to be doing much, much better around the high school and the grade school. Looks like people are getting used to their new routine. No new update on the dispatching. The chief has been kind of banging away on the state to try to get those numbers down, though. He's not confident that their numbers are correct, he feels like our numbers are much lower than what they're presenting. And one of our part-time officers, Mr. James Reel, has started his 13th year with the town. Which is lovely. Questions? I'll ask later. Uh, for the town manager, an inordinate amount of correspondence this week. The American Legion Post 49 has sent a bill for $4,992. They would like some money to help repave their driveway. I don't know where we're going to get $5,000.
It's not our problem to begin with. First of all, they're on a state highway.
It's a state highway.
And what they did was way over what ever needed to be done for, what little bit of a ditch was there. And we certainly aren't going to take care of them sealing their driveway.
I don't know if Navy Board wants to mull this over a little bit, this is a...
Yeah, I'd like to maybe talk with those guys, too.
I'm not even a voting citizen of Fairhaven, but I would have a comment about parking lots and, and the Legion in Castleton has a nice curb cut and some grassed area. And it minimizes the no man's land, and I know all of you have talked with highway department engineers and everybody else is, is to try to curb cut and design your parking areas and your entrances and exits to whether it's Legion, which is a great group, but that would be my only comment. Is that it's like kind of a no man's land parking lot, enter and exit as you choose down there, so. Just, you know, weird thoughts.
Ms. Pauline Workman sent a letter to the Board of Selectmen. She says she's new to composting and she would like a little bit of guidance. And I'm summarizing this. Ms. Workman would like the Board of Selectmen, and I guess the town, to mail out some kind of how-to guide for composting or put an article in the newspaper. I think we can do something.
Find out what the state guidelines are for sure, at least minimum, that's, that much. Yeah, we can help everybody as best we can, I don't, I don't know what we're supposed to be doing.
Uh, Mr. Ray Pinkowski on North Main. He asks again, well, when will the manhole be fixed near his house? Mr. Pinkowski's asked, so this has been going, and this has been an ongoing dilemma for two years. We have rebuilt all the manholes near his house. Two were rebuilt last year, one was finished this year. I, it's not a manhole problem. He has some heavy trucks that are coming through there and they're going a little too fast, and it shakes his house. I just by chance, when I was standing there talking to Mr. Pinkowski, I talked to his neighbor, who was 40 yards down the road and on the other side of the road. And he said the same thing, he says, when trucks come by, my house shakes.
I think if they went and just, those manholes are low down through there. And if they went and put some coal patch, don't level them out, so there's not a, not a... You even, yeah, you even feel it in a pickup if you hit the manholes all the way through there. So I mean, just fill them with some coal patch and get them leveled with the road, I think that would help, I think that'd help a lot.
Although...
There's a lot of them we're going to have to do that with because they're not where they, they're not up where they should be.
I'll reach out to DPW and...
I don't think they should put a hot mix in them because then they got to jackhammer everything out. But I think a good coal patch and keep an eye on them. Other than the one at the foot of the hill by the railroad track, they've got to do something with that one. Because it still sticks up, oh, probably that high.
Oh, Jesus.
And they're going, they're going to hit it with a snowplow.
Yeah, that'll catch a plow.
We assumed the state was going to come that far down, they decided not to.
And Mr. Laramie sent us a message on Facebook. He would like to know why the gate at Beaver Meadow, at the Beaver, above Beaver Meadow is not opened. It turns out that the town does not own that property, that's state property, and I think it's partially owned by Lynn Howard up there.
If I'm not mistaken, that's the one that the snow wheelers are always having.
They're, that's, it is.
Yeah, they're always complaining that the state closed that one on them. And it, and it changed everything for what they, what they can, where they can ride and everything, so.
I remember there was a lot of the towns are here, the state of Remont, that has on that road for their...
I don't know about that, but this has come out before, because we had, we had the snowmobile club in here one time.
Yeah.
Because...
It's not us.
They changed, they changed leadership in Rutland at the, at the district over there. And when she, they took it over, when she took it over, she locked the gate and refuses to open it. So they, this has been, this has been an ongoing thinker, I would say at least four years, five years or more.
It opened in October.
That's Nate Saxon is on the line.
It opened in October, it's opening.
Yeah, it opened in October, and I'm very positive that Rob Sterling is the one that controls the gate.
Okay. Alright, we can talk then.
Yeah, either way, it's, we can reach out, but...
I think a lot of this is to keep vehicles out there in the summertime, so there's no trash, because that's all Glen Lake Block, it's all state, Bonzene Park, they deal with.
Well, if it's going to open, that's good.
Oh, I had a meeting with the school, the elementary school yesterday. They were concerned about security around the playground. We agreed to keep the gate, you know, the gate closed so you can't drive around past the playground and hang out out back. I was hesitant to say that we would keep all Fairhaven residents out of the playground, though. No, that's, it's, and my...
I'm glad you're aware of this.
Well, it's, it's a public space, so it's like I can't stop somebody from walking, whether it be a 60-year-old woman or a 20-year-old man or a child, you know, I just couldn't do that. So we're working through the bumps and bruises of COVID and then, you know, this outdoor learning. We talked about Mr. Pinkowski. Congratulations to the Listers and Town Clerk, I don't, I don't think I said this last time, they, they received their COVID funding, their grant for COVID funding. They're now putting all of our documents online, they're digitizing maps, and we're uploading them all. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have everything where you can view it right from your house. How exciting.
Joining the 20th century.
Man. We should be hearing back, I heard from the Regional Planning Commission that we should be hearing back about our grant funding. We put in for, you know, a television screen and a laptop to conduct meetings and a few other computers. On your, in front of you, the report for Furnace Street came in. Again, the engineer said yes, we need, do need some drainage, but it's not going to be the magic bullet that the homeowners believe it's going to be. Five grants were submitted last Monday, those, those that we talked about at the last meeting. We installed three cameras at the playground. With the amount of damage that's going on down there, and if we're going to talk about installing new playground equipment, this was just the way to go. We're going to try to get a light in sooner rather than later to help with those, help those cameras. And I'm going to get with Chris Cole, he knows a lot about these things, I'm going to see if we can't get something for the, the town green, too. It's just, the scarecrows got damaged, I guess, over the weekend.
Last night. Yes, yeah, last night.
And it's just, you know, I imagine it's just kids, but still hopefully a, a camera will be a deterrent. Grants, cameras, I got in touch with somebody who does harassment training, hey. She's getting me a quote, and we'll be doing that as lo, as well as some, some training with staff of how better to interact with public. Tax rate came in yesterday, those bills, the revised bills will go out Monday. We have to wait for Nemrick to work their magic inside the computer system, so we can have a paper trail and then all the billing goes as it should, because some, some payments have already come in. Fuel tank is being installed today, they started working out back. And next Tuesday, we're having our first of two 1% option tax public hearings.
Next Tuesday?
Yeah. Yeah, Carol, can, or, can you come next Tuesday?
It depends how my back is, I expect my will, yes.
Okay, and that's what I have for the board today.
Questions for the town manager?
I have fun. So how much is left with the school? Are parents and children going to be kicked out of the playground during school hours?
They're not, no, but if there is somebody looking sneaky and suspicious, they'll call, yeah, they'll call the police department, the police department will come down and take a look.
Cool.
So, yeah.
Good to know.
There's a fine line right now, and, you know, nobody's done this before, and we're all just trying to figure it out, so I understand their position. But it, it's public space.
I have one question, I guess I kind of forgot about, we're talking about the road up there, the gate being a lot. Seems that we have a lot of four-wheeler traffic up around our watershed area. And it's not well up there. No gasoline-powered vehicles up there.
First of all, you might have, you might have some confusion on the gates. The gate to the Glen Lake Block is of course maintained by the state, big orange gate. And then Lynn Howard, she's gated in a couple different places, and there's like a couple different rows. I kind of learned a lot by just getting involved a little bit in Inman Pond, about the history of Fairhaven and what's happened to the right-of-ways, et cetera. So, well, I don't know, I don't want to move on to this docket, the Inman Pond thing, but when we already molded a trail around Inman Pond and, and we wanted to go up and just take a hike, actually David and I biked up to Howard and Sheldon. And on the way back, we bumped into Lynn Howard and we said, oh, this is good. David goes to Lynn Howard, well, we talked about going up to Sheldon and Howard Pond with you. And Lynn, Lynn calls up my sister, Juann, and says, I don't want any bicycles up there, I got broken into, you can stay on town land. So I, geez, I made a few phone calls to like some people with some history, Frank Freeners and Phil King, who like is Mr. North Woods. He goes, back in the eighties, the town manager sold the right-of-way to Howard and Sheldon Pond, which seemed kind of weird because you've got town forests at Howard Pond, you've got town forests at Sheldon Pond, you've got town forests at Inman Pond, yet now you're not connected unless through a term I heard, a pimp road, was what Frank said. Well, I think they retained it as a pimp road, which is, if anyone has a definition of a pimp road, I, I think it's an unmaintained, grassed-in road gated that the town still owns, but doesn't maintain. Does that sound right? So actually I wanted, actually I should have called Glenn and Bob and had you guys dig into a little bit of history before this meeting, because if you wanted to open up the watershed to, you know, hiking, biking, people, just basically you just have to advertise it, people just don't know it's there. Right now, you have a circle around Inman Pond, but you can't really take a walk up to Howard and Sheldon Pond legally, I guess. Even though the four-wheelers are using a back road, not the one with the pipeline coming down. So there's actually two roads servicing Howard and Sheldon, and so illegal four-wheeler usage has been going around Inman Pond and then up to Howard and Sheldon and along nature conservancy land, but that's, that's nothing I would want to get involved in. I mean, your town, as far as your, your own Inman Pond watershed, you probably may think of having cameras there in the future. Just, you don't want to get in a battle probably with all these owners of four-wheelers, but you would say, we don't want you on Inman Pond. Wherever else you go is your business. But that particular watershed is not to be motorized vehicles around, you know, and...
Should be common knowledge, I mean, that's, that's been the way it's been forever.
You know, I mean, this pandemic, the pandemic increased not only bike sales, but four-wheeler sales, and then you have Benson and Orville that have legalized it on the dirt roads. Well, just like anything else, people want to find the Holy Grail to Fairhaven. You know, through the North Woods, whether it's a nature conservancy block or state land or town land. So it really is hard to monitor, you're not going to monitor with taking a policeman up there at seven o'clock in the morning, the chances of ever finding anyone are nil. But you could, at least for the Inman Pond area, I'm sure you could probably have camera usage or...
One or two are, water guys are up there.
So I'll wait till this is on the docket to tell.
Well, it's funny you should mention that, you're next up.
Okay.
As long as you're talking.
Are we ready?
Yeah, if you can get your cousin to stop talking, you can talk.
So just to give you an idea, I'm Steve, I'm Mike Morris, and Mike, Mike's the action guy, and he gets done and, and like you said, we've already brother hiked and walked and biked around Inman Pond. But I did want to follow our course of action and, and bring the Selectors a map and a rough draft of, of what we hope to do. And it's kind of convenient that Nicole and the Recreation Department is here tonight. I don't have a lot of copies, but people can share and, and, and so, yeah. So we did do a map, and Joe had indicated to us, John, let's look over a little bit. Joe had given us the road maps, and Mike has brought up that subject of, you know, what right-of-ways and where we are and what we have in the town and around. And the North Woods is the area of, of, you know, what do we have and where can we go up there? And, but to back it down quite a bit, as an activity kind of group, we'd like to utilize the existing parking places that are around town. The south end of the park, the airport, where there's a toilet, playgrounds, the park or the high school, a couple pull-offs. To have as the starting points for the various types of activities you might choose. Whether it's just to walk a dog, take a walk, ride a bike, whatever. So that's the map we used, we used a, go ahead Glenn, yeah?
Well, it just, when I saw that map, I'm saying, it looks like it's lacking Munger Road.
Uh, no, that's, that's that little loop, that's that little loop dead center.
That's right?
Right there.
That's Munger Road right there?
Yeah. It's on your little map, I had to downsize you guys and I don't have color coordinations, but, yeah, so. And we didn't pencil in any of the, like Mike was saying, pimp roads or existing trails or old logging roads or any of that kind of stuff. Meeting.
The new proposed road around Inman Pond, I didn't see.
No, we didn't draft in anything, what we got is...
The road that's already there, even.
I'll use my map here. Yeah, Mike's got some, we penciled in our track. This is, this is your parking, this is your parking area at the watershed.
Okay.
All we did is use your existing road around Inman Pond. And I power mowed it with a hand mower, three hours, David and I, taking turns. The four-wheeler trail was there that knocked it down, so it was just tall grass in the middle, two feet high bushes. So now you got a four-foot, you have a four-foot walking and biking path around Inman Pond. And there is good signage there that says, you know, no fires, no camping, no motorized vehicles. So you've, you've put a restriction there at good point, so. Here, here lies the gray area. So Sheldon Pond is here, Howard Pond is here, with, with the historical dams and the water system. This dotted line represents the existing town road and, and the existing pipeline. That is kind of what, and, and the state, the, the state thing that you guys are talking about is, goes on the state land part with the orange gate. So the four-wheelers, there's a, in the back of your Inman Pond, there's a sign that says no motorized vehicles. And then the wheelers, we've got a nice, using a different road that goes through Lynn Howard's land, have a nice road to Sheldon and Howard. And then the existing road coming down through where we met Lynn, said that the town, well, sold that right-of-way. So we don't really know if the town still has a right-of-way there, or if it's a pimp road. I mean, for timber purposes, the town has this land, this block of land, town forest next to Sheldon. I, I can't believe that you can't dry up timber if you wanted to or something. So the town has got some type of, legally, some type of road. So the only thing I am saying, right now with this recreational development, you are kind of concentrating on Inman Pond because of the gray area and the private ownership of Lynn Howard. She owns all the land, even if you do own the land, she owns all the land around the road, if you do own the road, and she's paranoid. She lives out there alone, she's been broken into, but I really can't carry a wood stove or something on my bicycle for real good. But I'm just saying that I don't think...
So that was our preliminary outing, because having, you know, land up there and skiing and hiking there for the last 30 years. I'd always gone to Howard Dam, Sheldon Dam, just every once in a while, and you've hunted up in there Glenn, and a lot of people hunt up in there. And so we were kind of surprised to see that there was activity at both, at Sheldon Dam, campfires, you know, canoe, you know, we didn't, we just looked and got out of there, so. We aren't, we aren't certain if there is right-of-ways to all points of there, if there's right-of-ways through or near the nature conservancy land, the town land and any of that kind of stuff.
I guess the beauty of this whole initiative is you don't have to spend a penny, because the road system being slate-based and, and the way it was built around Inman Pond, it is great. You don't need anything. And the whole, the whole idea is to start at your existing area at, at the airport, to pack a car there, pull out your bike or families from town. And I, I figure it's probably three miles on Munger Road, Munger Road and Inman Road combined, maybe three miles to, to, to the water plant. Munger Road and Inman Road combined, maybe three miles to, to, to the water plant. Then the loop is maybe another two mile loop.
Probably.
Uh, and then back, so you have three, four, five, six, seven, that's an eight miler from the airport that's already there. The only thing, it just needs to be advertised and signage through the town. Uh, whether it's front porch forums, say, hey, the town of Fair Haven, uh, is now encouraging, uh, hiking and biking on our, uh, watershed. And you'll have to decide, you don't want dogs probably because it's a watershed. So that's something, no dogs allowed. I mean, that's what Brooklyn City's done with theirs. And so basically it's just kind of signage and what you guys agree on and, uh, and you got it. You got, you got your own recreational area for the town without having a billionaire like the Conines, uh, dumping, uh, millions, uh, into this town because they don't really want to.
So I've sent a, I've sent a quick email out to the nature conservancy just to get their feedback as to how they approach, um, access or, uh, activities on their properties. And then there is a, there is a wildlife management area on the south end of the marsh and that's connected to the airport. And I just wanted to get their feedback as to how they approach, uh, paths and, and trails. And primarily, as Mike is indicating, we, we just look for where the old roads used to be or a logger or somebody had made a road 20, 30, 50 years, 100 years ago, or just take the path of least resistance to come up with a trail. So, so again, what Mike's referring to is his level of activity. My interest of having land up there and have skied and hiked it and biked it now for quite a few years. But we also want to drop back to more of a recreational connection like with Nicole and the grade school and the high school. So that beginners can just learn to bicycle around the playgrounds or at the high school. And there's already a network of bicyclers. Pat, Bird and his wife bicycle quite often. You see people. And of course there's also the hikers and the walkers that have walked the block, Claire and many others. And just decide to coordinate all of those levels, whether you're a beginner or intermediate or an expert like Mike that wants to go 20 or 30 miles on a trip. And, and have some parking coordination and have the police know that people will park here. And at those starting points, you may have a signage that says you are here and here's a little green trail that beginners can go on and here's a blue trail and an orange trail if you're an expert. And, um, there's, you know, there's examples of like TAM trail around Middlebury. Um, they have coordinated with landowners and town property and college property and created a, a smooth kind of network of whatever you want to do, whether you're a kid, walk, whatever. So that's the long range.
You're so lucky you don't have to even do that.
Yeah, that's the long range goal. And the, and the immediate goal, like Mike has pointed out, is that there's BAM trails already in our, in our town. Can we get to the, can we get to the, uh, Inman Pond road without having a gate open at the town?
Yeah, yes.
There's a break in the fence, there's a break in the fence when the town is open the gate, the main gate to, uh, operating the plant. So there isn't a gate like I explained to you or showed you at the, at the, um, Rails Trail in Castleton. They have a full trail, a full gate within the system of the trail and then a beaching that you can get your bicycle or your body through, walking or stroller, but not big enough for a four wheeler.
Yeah.
And so those are customary gates. You'll see them at federal parks, state parks, all over the place.
And here's the deal, you got such a nice setup that, uh, if you didn't want people actually physically walking by the water plant in case you're worried of, uh, about, uh, anything, you know, people spray painting, uh, uh, just, just some things that could go wrong messing with your water plant. All you would have to do is move your existing fence like 30 feet and you could actually block off the actual, uh, water plant.
Water treatment tank.
But you can still go up the hill through the regular gate and you can go all the way around the pond because there's logging roads to between the pond and, and the actual watershed or actually your, your plant. So if you want to close that off for, you know, like a 911 thing, you know, I mean, that's when the big concern was up there with some poisoning, you know, your water supply or something. But, uh, if you were worried about, uh, you know, people vandalizing your existing structures, the only thing you need to do is really move your fence and then you could have that gated. But you could still use, you could still make a circle. Or you just, this is a thing, a nine to five thing, you know, it's, the gates are open nine to five, close at five. And if people are in there, they're just going to have to walk through the bushes to get out, you know, it's no big deal.
So the next thing for us to do is to, well, we, we should research what, what we, what we own for access to the, to Sheldon.
Yeah.
But I mean, the next thing to do is to get the parking spaces and get that kind of organized. Is there, is there, uh, any kind of, any kind of help for that or...
It's all mowed. Six, six, six carriage parking at, at the watershed.
Yeah, right.
Right, right before. I, I kind of mowed that and made, you know, uh, lot some, uh, sumac and made that so you can get, yeah, I think five or six cars right there. And that's probably about the usage you're going to get from daytime use. People that want to go up there and walk around or bring their kids and bike around or something like that. So there's six parking spaces there already. And I'm sure you can park next to the road if there was open floor.
So our next step, Bob, and I agree with you, is, would be to clearly define, um, the pull offs and the parking spots. The newest one up on Scotch Hill that gives access to the, uh, Kehoe, uh, new watershed for, that's sort of in works. But the other one is way up on Scotch Hill just before the Andrusco quarry or the quarries where you access the Glen Lake Block from the Scotch Hill side. And if you continue all the way up and over through, you come to the gate on the, on the Beaver Meadow side. So that Glen Lake Block is, is gated and, and, but there's pull offs and there's places to park and, and then utilizing the south end of the park. And, and that would be where your, your, say a sign or your trail heads would be at your parking spaces. And, yeah, go ahead.
Just a couple of questions, kind of mine. You know from mowing and everything, what kind of, for upkeep, you get this trail in, you've got the parking, what, we're going to budget pretty soon here, but for upkeep?
Really hardly nothing.
What's, what's the...
You're, you're half mowed now. You mow all the way to the back, the back end, I guess, with the, is that a dam or...
Yeah, there's a dam at the very end.
Okay, so you already mowed to the outflow. And then I mowed something that hasn't been mowed for like 10 years.
Yeah.
And it was only two feet high.
I need to brush off.
Yeah, and that was with a conventional five horsepower Husker brand of big wheel mower, which I use on, on my property.
A lot of the, a lot of the Tams and the Slate Valley Clubs and the Pine Hill Parks, they utilize volunteer dams. And, and so the budgeting, Glenn, would probably be at your parking areas if you needed to, you know, build those access gates that were...
Swipe it with a plow once in winter, maybe with a snowshoe.
Yeah.
So you're, you're just not going to swipe with a plow. You're up there anyways cleaning up.
And, and the question for Joe and, uh, I think if someone goes and gets hurt, is there any liability that we, by having our marked trail and everything that we are taking on?
Well, if you're a private landowner in the state of Vermont, you can't get sued, someone recreating on your property.
The thing to do is, is to check with the rail trail.
Right, that would be my own...
See with the rail trail, how they go about it.
You may be able to get some low cost.
Yeah, I hear you Glenn. And that's a good point. And, and like, I, I plan to seek, you know, seek out like the TAM and that's the only one I've been on and that's the trail around Middlebury. And so there is a quote unquote probably TAM Inc. or TAM Association. Uh, if it's made up of, of the town or if it's made up of a, of a nonprofit or whatever, to sort of, uh, find out how that lays out because I know everybody always worried about getting hurt doing stuff and, um...
And don't take those comments as lack of support because I, I, I support this. I just think there are a couple of things when we're talking about.
Oh, no, this is the whole thing. I mean, these are the things you got to look at.
Yeah, whether you're biking on the street or walking on sidewalks.
Uh, what you're getting, what you're getting into, just to put an advertisement in front porch forum saying, uh, Fair Haven is now, uh, has a recreational area for people.
Well, there's plenty, plenty of people we can reference off that Joe. I mean, obviously, obviously Slate Valley Trails, the, the rail trail.
Their trail Percy is Chuck Helfer, ATL F E R, I guess, former member of the, he's Trails Committee. But like I pointed out earlier, you should probably just have this be a town thing for a while without bringing in an organization.
Oh, yeah. I, I'm just using reference and how they got around liability. We could tap them for information on how they carried out those types of worries or concerns about, uh, liability or...
Did they do it through their recreation committee as a town or did they, oh, there's a lot of...
Well, we certainly want to draw on all parties, whether they're landowners like the TNC or the state of Vermont, the town of Fair Haven, private landowners, Nicole and the recreation department at the gated school, the high school, just to feed this whole idea of exercise through activity. And we got a pretty nice town here to flatwalk here if you're recovering from a heart attack or, or going, you know, balls to the walls. Mike wants to, you know, bike up over the north woods. So thank you for your time. We wanted to just get back...
You're doing, you're doing good stuff.
The next step is, is a little research on liability, a little research on those parking spots and, uh... And what, what access we really have, if there is truly a right of way to landlocked lands. If, if we have right of ways, even if it's partially over what may have been given up roads, class four roads that were given up years and years and years ago. Um, and just sort of slowly get back into that so the landowner doesn't get too upset that you're, you know, knocking on the door and asking...
And as far as, you know, I mean, the way you approach the four wheelers, I mean, you don't really want to... It's, it's a hassle, you know, you don't want to have, uh, people upset when you're just going to have to lay it down. And, uh, we, we really don't want you just around this watershed. I don't care where else you go on your own private land because a lot of people own private land and, uh, they're just, uh, they've got a pretty nice setup right now. I mean, Sheldon Pond owned by, owned by the town, there's canoes up there, fire pits, cul-de-sacs, uh, it's crazy.
Yeah, I think, I think operators of four wheelers and snow machines know the rules about state land that don't, they don't want four wheelers in them. Um, and, and the snowmobilers have to join VAST to travel wherever they go. So it's sort of like a multi-use. You really want to bring everybody together. We don't want to make anybody mad. Like Mike said, there's plenty of ways you can do four wheeling activities in some areas. And then there's plenty of ways you can do, you know, personal activities that's no motorized. I mean, there's got to be an area for times when you want to have it quiet and not motorized. And then VAST has their system that takes them everywhere and they're a great organization too. So if everybody kind of comes together, we all can sort of find a pathway through where we want to go.
Also the town of, uh, West Haven and Benson, you know, if they're legalizing four wheeler use on dirt roads, well, I suppose you would come to the conclusion, well, Munger Road would probably be all right to ride a UTV or four wheeler around, maybe Bigelow Hill and Inman Pond, the actual Inman Pond Road. But as far as going around the pond, your watershed is not where you want to be, that's all. You know, and that, that's, that's a compromise. That is saying, these guys, you know, you can ride up down Inman Pond Road, you can ride Munger Road and Bigelow Road. Uh, just don't do that little circle around our watershed. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure you aren't going to have a battle over that with these people.
Throughout, throughout New England, the jury's still out on allowing ATVs on highways and roads. The, the accidents and the maiming and the injuries in the state of Maine is like through the roof. And they don't have the proper brakes, helmets and seat belts aren't a law. And so it's, it's a, it's a different world than just getting the good old boys together and say, okay, let's open up all the dirt roads in Benson to youths. Uh, they're not cars and they don't have the same safety braking. They don't have the licensing and the, and the laws behind the operation of them. You can take that extreme view and say, whoa.
Well, they're having a fun, in the case of Budweiser going to the wheel in.
So anyway, thank you guys. The next step, we'll get hold of you guys.
We will, like, once we do some of our homework.
Lots of months, it sounds pretty good. Again, I'll keep touch with Joe.
Please. And then, you know, we get, at least we can get some, uh, snowshoe.
And again, I'm not a town taxpayer, but my, my family, I've got grandchildren in town and my mother-in-law's in town and I was raised in this town. And all I want now, this whole deal, is to see some kid ride a bike up to Inman Pond with a big ass smile on his face. And that's it. I'm not looking for anything else. I got all the right in the world. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
You can, you can get that to Joe, but...
Give it back to him.
Yeah, we'll fine tune this map.
Take care.
See you later.
Yeah, you too, you too.
Water bill discussion, do we have anybody?
Um, just, oh, uh, just Mr. Workman from the last meeting. Um, he requested the abatement for his sewer. Again, it's, he's just, he agrees that his water went through the pipes, but there wasn't a leak and there's not... For my, in my office, there's really no, um, history of just giving people an abatement because I watered my garden. So that's, that's where this, this gentleman is sitting. He wants an abatement because he has a large garden.
We haven't done that in the past. What does, I mean, the only way that, the only way I think we could do that and it certainly can't do it retroactively, is if somebody's going to do that, that they look at the meter before, after each time. And we take their word for it, which is good of us, but I mean, how, how can we go backwards? Everybody and their brother, because I water my garden too.
There you, yeah.
What, was this also to discuss the, we went back and we looked at the ordinance itself and the, and the ordinance itself? Doesn't really spell out any kind of adjustment or abatement, which is a bigger thing for, for us. I, I...
We've always have in the past with somebody filling their pool or that kind of thing. They, they, they check their meter. We take their word for it. We get the before and after, subtract that out.
I'd like somewhere on our parking lot, I would like to see more discussion around. There's something fundamentally, when you're not getting, when you're getting charged for sewer and you're not using, it's not going in the sewer system, whether that be the same logic for filling a pool goes for watering gardens and watering lawns, pressure washing houses. Uh, uh, we're charging pretty, pretty good money. We put half again as much for the sewer as the water, just I, I'm all for the person who's, you pay for the water when you put it in your swimming pool. You pay for the water when you pressure wash your house, but when it evaporates up into the air, shouldn't be paying the sewer on the, on the gallons of water. It's not going into the sewer system and not, at least, I, I think we, our water and sewer and how we do it needs to be looked at a lot more closely than...
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to get to a situation where we're going to, where you're going to say there's a X, you know, a, a flat rate that we're not going to charge because it's summer.
It's, I'm not saying that's, I'm not exonerations right now. I'm just saying that I don't believe our water and sewer issue that we get every summer that we go, oh boy, that's, that's behind us. We'll deal with it next summer again. I don't, I don't think we should have, have a system that we have to go and everyone up in arms every summer. And I don't know, don't really feel comfortable that we've addressed it to this point either. So I, I, if, if we're not going to discuss it more here, I want it in the parking lot because we do, we do need to discuss it more. I, I don't think our water and sewer is operating the way as, as well as we should be doing.
We should see what, what needs to be fixed in the ordinance. We, we do visit that periodically and we haven't in a while, so.
Um, I think the last time was 2019.
Jeff?
Go ahead.
I had one thought on it, um, and I, I talked to Joe about it a little bit. And, uh, I guess I was just wondering how it would be to a... And, uh, I guess I was just wondering how it would be to allow an optional program where, uh, homeowners could potentially either, either be, uh, the town could either supply a, a meter or, or the homeowner could buy a meter. I'm not sure how it would work. Uh, but it would be a second meter and it would be on a dedicated outside spigot on your house. So if you decided that you had enough usage to warrant buying the hundred dollar meter, um, and you were willing to, to put, put that investment in, then you would, you would meter that outside consumption. So you're filling your pool and doing your, doing your, uh, you know, lawn and garden work out of that one spigot that's metered. And with our new electric readers, it would be nothing for our guys to read that and just debit that out from the sewer portion. It would just be water only on that, on that meter.
That's, that's the kind of alternatives in discussion that I think we need to have, Jeff. I think you're spot on.
It, it, it just would be an absolutely equitable way to do it.
Yeah.
There's, no one can say, hey, Bob, I, I know you had that meter, but I think, I think you were flushing your toilet with that meter. I mean, unless we see Bob's hose running in the window, but, you know what I mean? It, it just seems like it'd be a lot more equitable than saying, well, I use, I think, three thousand gallons when I filled my pool.
Right, right. Well, I, I think that any of that stuff is, you know, it's time to look at, at the ordinance and see if we can run with it. I, I think that's the kind of thing that makes perfect sense. You can, I think the, the onus is on the owner to begin with, and then once the meter's in there, it's, it's, uh, up to us to read it.
But I, I do want the town to have, uh, control over how that's installed.
Oh, yeah.
I want it to be a dedicated line that has no spurs, you know, it, it can't be able, you know how we install meters now, you can't put a valve behind it so that you can grab water or whatever. It, it's going to take a little bit, I think, and.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, just, just a thought.
Okay, I'll, I'll drop that into the, uh, parking lot. We'll take a look at abatements and revisit water sewer.
Yeah, and the ordinance as well as the process when you feel that you're being charged for something that shouldn't be there. I think it's, it's that whole appeal process.
The process.
When I read the ordinance, when I, when I read the ordinance, I didn't see, I didn't see the appeal process. So I, when I went to look and, when I went to look.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, I'll, I'll look again because I didn't see the, the appeal process that we use. I mean, you want to be explicit. I look for the appeal process we've been using and it's not in the ordinance.
I did have one other thought too, that, um, the more we dilute out the cost by pulling water out, uh, from the sewer portion, it, it is going to drive the rate up on the sewer side.
That will, it will lead into a spiral of people getting a meter, the rate going up, more people getting a meter, the rate going up, it, it will definitely spiral.
It, it's just worth noting that.
I, I think if, Jake, you measured yours and it was like three hundred and fifty for a half an hour.
Yeah.
You know, so it, it, people are going to find that it's not a bunch of water you're on, or the water you're guarding.
I washed, I pressure washed my garage and I checked the meter and it was like a hundred and forty gallons. So it's not even worth.
Of a thousand.
It's not even worth, you know, doing.
As long, as long as you don't forget the hose is running there overnight or something.
And it runs.
Well, I haven't done that more than a couple times.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go to sleep and hear the water running through the pipes.
Yeah, I gotta, uh, nevermind.
Okay.
I can't blame anybody, myself. So further discussion to come.
Hmm.
Okay. Toolbox purchase.
Yeah, so we, we talked about this at the last meeting. Um, D P W went out and got a couple of quotes for a Husky, uh, toolbox. They found a, a couple of Huskies ranging from twelve eighty-six to eight ninety-eight. I did ask the, ask the guys just to go to Tractor Supply or the low, you know, the closest place to see what they had, uh, and they found a toolbox for forty-nine, uh, four hundred ninety-nine ninety-nine.
How big a box are they buying for crying out loud? Just tools?
Yeah, so, well, this box, um, which didn't come out at the last meeting, this box is going into the garage and the, the old box, it's a little bit more weathered, they're going to stick that in the back of the van. And I have pictures if you want to see pictures.
Those are the industrial.
I, I wondered, like, did a gang box work? I'll about that after.
Nate, do you want to talk to that?
Well, the one Husky that, that we wanted was the eight ninety-eight one, and that would be the one for the garage itself to hold our tools for equipment and, well, for everything, basically. And the old one would be going in the water van, well, that we have now and try to get everything, uh, built for the future of water leaks and, you know, be more and more prepared and more professional on the job.
Right back.
But the new, but the new toolbox itself was, the plan was to have the new toolbox inside the garage, that way we could fit all our tools in it and be more organized and not stuff on like on shelves and on this shelf, this shelf, and just like have a dedicated area. Yeah, we, it's just more easier to work on stuff when we do, you know, because we do a lot of in-house maintenance on our own equipment, in which, you know, we don't plan on getting rid of that anytime soon. You know, we do all that, so.
So the one you're looking at is eight something, nine hundred dollars?
Yes, it was, uh, eight, uh.
I'd say use that one for Tractor Supply.
Uh, eight, eight ninety-eight.
Well, the only thing I, I mean, better than, than a thousand, but not much better.
What's wrong with buying this one here? What's wrong with this one? They don't attract the supply.
Is it big enough? Uh, and the other, what I, what I was going to say was, this is money that's coming out of the scrap metal they, they got in that car. So it's not coming out of.
We're not spending any money.
We're not spending any money, I.
But it's the same thing. They get fifty bucks, they want to spend it.
Well.
I mean, come on.
But it's, it's a good idea to get the tools organized, it's a good idea to have things where you can get to them. That's part of the thing I was talking about a long time ago about my best, be able to get to your tools in five seconds, literally five seconds. And if it's in a organized thing, we're not spending X or Y, I'm.
Well, that was the thing about it is, you know, try to keep all our tools in designated spot and, you know, then we cleaned up the yard, so we figured it was kind of a perfect, you know, kind of clean up the yard and get something that we need to and then come out of our budget line, so to speak. Am I saying that right?
Sounds good to me, but, I don't, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from, Jay, I, but I, I'm not, it's the difference of, it's the difference of three hundred bucks, right? Or four.
I, I'm trying to get my head around, they have a budget, they're not asking for new money to come in, why are we micromanaging and buying the toolbox?
You're not micromanaging. It's town money.
I disagree.
It's town money you're responsible for.
I believe when we put a budget together and we agree on a budget and they're living within their budget, we shouldn't be going telling them how to spend every dollar.
They, but wait a minute, they didn't live within their budget last year.
But I'm not talking last year, talking this year, and I'm talking a toolbox they want to buy now.
I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to get, it, it needs to get our argument of.
No, I, I.
Just everybody say what they want to say and I.
I believe we're Mike, what I want to say is I believe we're micromanaging this account to death right now.
No, you're not. What's our job? Our job is to watch the town money. That's what we're here for.
And that's.
We're supposed to be watching over taxpayers' money and that's what we're supposed to be here for. That's not micromanaging.
It is taxpayer money.
I, I disagree with you, Jay, but that's.
But it's also, we're also here, and I, I agree, that's a big part of our job, but we're also here to demonstrate our respect for the town employees and if they've made a choice for what they think will, they'll be able to do their work in a more efficient way. I can't judge that, I don't know, but they're saying they can. So I would like to respect that, I guess, and we're still within the finance, um, parameters that we need to be within, so. I get it, it's all the same pocketbook, really, but I want to demonstrate our respect for the work they do.
I know where you are. I'm, I'm kind of the same boat. Jeff?
Um, pretty well the same. I'm glad they found that alternative funding source.
Yeah.
So the board to, uh, this money would come out, out of the, um, Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, you'd need to make a motion to spend.
Does that money went into that?
It went into that. Um, make a motion to spend not more than eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
Say nine hundred dollars.
Then nine hundred, not, not more than nine hundred dollars to come out of the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund for the purchase of a Husky toolbox.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that the, the, well, uh, comes out of the public reserve.
Of Public Works Capital Reserve.
Works Capital Reserve Fund, not to exceed nine hundred dollars for the acquisition of a new toolbox.
Probably going to pay tax on it. Oh, no, no, nevermind.
That was great.
I'm thinking to myself, is there a second?
I'm sucking up.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. Been there.
I have it too.
Okay, um, moving on. Get yourself a toolbox, Nate.
All right, I appreciate it very much. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you, Nick.
Apple Tree Priority Agreement.
Yeah, so when we started the, the grant that has funded Apple Tree is a pass-through from the town to Apple Tree. Um, when we started the process, the town signed a mortgage saying, and, and I paraphrase, if you don't follow the, uh, the specifications of your grant, we then have a lien on your property. Um, we signed that back in, I forget, yeah, back in twenty, whenever it was. Um, in the intervening time, Apple Tree went out and they got more loans and they got, uh, more funders. Um, and so they had to update their mortgage to add this one new funder. So they have to go into that list of people who say, Apple Tree, if you don't follow the rules, we take your property. Um, and so there's really no change for us, but, um, it's a formality that we have to sign it as somebody who holds a mortgage because they added that one other person, one other entity. Does that make sense?
Is the other, is the other entity moving ahead of us in some way?
The other entity is, I think the other entity is in front of us. Everybody is in front of us.
Yeah, but how can they get in front of where we were?
The, so they're, I'm imagining it's because they're a bank and they have cash, like, cash involved in it while we're just a grant. So we're actually last on the list, right behind the developer fee mortgage, the developer.
And that, all it is for us is the money came to, to the town and, and we just passed it.
Yeah, we don't have any, any cash or skin really in the game, except the grant funding that wasn't ours to begin with.
Is the, uh, did it push out the, the payment timetable on their project when they borrowed more money?
No.
So everything else is the same?
Yeah, for us, everything has remained the same. Now, I'm not privy to their, what they have with other banks and organizations, but for us, everything has remained the same.
What do we need to do for a?
Uh, so for this, I would just need a, a motion to approve the Apple Tree Priority Agreement and then Mr. Richard signs it.
Good boy.
Congratulations.
I'll make the motion to approve the Apple Tree Priority Agreement.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yes, you're the authorized signer.
Can I write in secret agent?
Yes.
All right. There, you got to wake up.
Just leave it in.
I'm talking about you.
Playground Grant Match Request.
Yep. So I, I really have to eat, eat this mistake. Um, I kept telling everybody it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar total project, um, which wasn't the case. I was looking back at an old grant that we had already funded a part, a part of that, which was our bathroom. Um, it turns out our project is actually closer to a hundred thousand dollars, um, to, to put in a new playground and, um, the grant is coming, the grant application process is opening in October. If we wait, if we miss this opportunity, this grant doesn't come around but every two years, so we'll skip next year and then we can do it again the year after. Murphy has managed to raise about thirty thousand dollars, about thirty thousand dollars sitting in our, um, playground fund now. Uh, we're asking the Board of Selectmen to supply twenty thousand dollars from the Grant Match Reserve Fund, um, to go with that thirty thousand, so then we can purchase a one hundred thousand dollar playground, if we get the grant funds.
That, if, if in fact more money is raised, i- is the P T O kicking in on that as well? Or is that considered part of the thirty thousand?
That's part of the thirty thousand. Yeah, so we've done fundraising alongside and we've given the money as well.
Okay.
It's okay.
Murphy's have a lot.
He's worked so hard, he's telling you.
I was hoping that there was like another thirty, forty thousand dollars going around the P T O.
Right.
Okay.
In other words, they get a hundred thousand dollar grant, we get a fifty thousand dollars.
It's a fifty fifty match. We give fifty, they give fifty. Last, last time they funded five projects and we were number six.
Oh.
I know. I've never been more disappointed in my life, well.
Well, that probably picks us up a little bit, to have our own, I would think.
I think so.
You should be number one next time.
Theoretically, you, you obviously haven't worked with the state in a while, eh?
Where all the twenty thousand come from?
Uh, from the Grant Match Reserve Funds. There, there are other, uh, grants that are currently drawing out of that fund, but, um, there's enough to handle that as well as this, um, this grant.
How much is in there?
Looks like.
Give us some numbers.
Almost eighty, almost eighty thousand.
Grant Match Reserve?
Looks like after you take twenty thousand out.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It leaves you about fifty-nine.
So, yeah, so it, what, what's on the sheet is a hundred and, one hundred, one hundred three, one hundred thousand, three fifty-six, but other things are coming out of that.
Mm-hmm.
Total that will remain in Grant Match Fund would be forty-four thousand after everything else is funded to be.
You take twenty out, or thirty out of the forty-four, is that what you said?
Twenty.
Just twenty.
Twenty out of the forty-four.
No, twenty, to get all the grant, if I understand what you're saying, all the grants that are drawing off that hundred thousand dollars, hundred plus thousand dollars, including.
Then there'll be forty-four lots.
Forty-four.
And then between another twenty out of the forty-four.
No.
No, okay, you already counted.
Everything.
Counting it twice.
Counting, counting this grant, there will be forty-four thousand dollars in the accounts.
All right.
And we generally throw something at it during the budget season, so.
So Murphy's doing a fantastic job of raising money. Are you looking for an excellent job as a mayor? He's saying thank you. He's saying thank you.
Humble, a humble mayor. Wonderful thing.
So, you're looking...
With, with this 20,000, we're still going to have 40-something thousand in there, correct?
Yes.
I'll make the motion that we do the 20,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? We kind of beat it to death. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous, unanimous.
Doesn't mean you're taking 50,000 out of the grant money because you took the 30, there's 20.
If we get, if we get the, if we get the grant, yeah.
They just have to know the money's going to be there if the grant comes through.
Right, right, right. That would be nice. That's the first...
And when, okay, it comes back out not fully, right?
Mm-hmm.
When would you know?
Uh, they, they turned that around pretty quick. When, when I did it last, not last year, the year before, it was six weeks to two months. So, we should know.
So, we're looking at, if, if it was come the mean, springtime, we'd throw in a new car, or a new...
Yeah. It, it wouldn't be until after the new year, for sure.
Okay. Doesn't make any difference. I mean, just, has to, so you have some kind of a timeline if, I mean, in the meantime, like Bob said, every other money being put back into there. So, I mean, we're not, we haven't dropped it down to 40,000 yet. We just anticipated. That's what we're going to take out. Correct?
Yep.
Which will be good to know in budget season, soon as we know. But anyways, anyways, yeah. All right, so, we're going to try again. Don't be afraid to keep going at the, the pace you're going.
See, you see, Murphy's already pretty tired out.
I know. He's pretty tired. Thanks a lot. Really, thank you, guys. I mean, it seems like you're doing something every weekend.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Stop by anytime. So, Cemetery Deed.
Cemetery deed. I have one Cemetery deed for Susan Forky. I hope I said that right.
Susan what?
Susan what?
Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to, is it accept the Cemetery deed request for Susan?
To grant.
To grant the Cemetery deed request for Susan Forky?
Second.
It is for... Cedar Grove Cemetery.
No, but there's a lot.
A lot, lot number, and let's see here. Section, Lot Number 1, 57 North, Section 11.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous again. All right. Uh, there's a place for everybody to sign.
Oh, for everybody.
So, you guys sign there or not? Um, Board of Selectmen, letter of support for sidewalk grant.
Yeah. So, the, the pedestrian study came back, the one where we chose the, you know, option four. It's more, so putting in sidewalk is more expensive, I will start saying than I, than I thought and then what the report had thought.
Sidewalk grant twice?
I'm sorry?
Almost twice. Didn't we, weren't we talking around 400 grand or something at one point?
Uh, the report came back at...
Right here.
At 400, 470, I want to say. That didn't account, that didn't account for engineering. It didn't account for, which is 20%, inspection, which is 15%, and then municipal management, which is also an additional 15%. If I said that right. Yeah. Any contingency was in there?
15%, 20%.
Based on his numbers and based on what I ran from the state, total project to pave downtown to live, to River Street will be 800, 807,000, 900, 807,000, 912 dollars.
What are those grants worth?
The grants, um, the grant, I have seen them pay, I've seen the grant pay up to 660,000. But the town match on the total project is 160, almost 162,000. It's a bunch of money to repave downtown.
It's, 162 is a long ways towards the bridge. By the outlet.
So, Grant Match has 200, I'm sorry. The proposal was to take the fun, the funds out of streets and sidewalks. There is 271,000, a little more than 271,000 there. There is $72,000 matched for the parking lot. And then with 162,000 coming out of that total, there would be $37,000 left in that, in that account.
Okay, so, there's enough.
When they wrote the report, did they talk about the, the safety aspect of the sidewalks? Because it seems to me it's almost like we don't have a choice. But do they grade them from safe to terribly unsafe? Because I think we have some terribly unsafe.
The, the pedestrian report does say that it's unsafe. It, it does talk about what residents have said about how they feel unsafe. Even the last revitalization report that came out, it was, it said the same thing. Very compelling that the revitalization report actually said, "Our lack of pedestrian facilities is inhibiting our ability to grow economically."
Right.
And that's almost verbatim what it says.
Mm-hmm. We've kicked the can down the road.
Where, where do they consider to have those places?
That, so there's a lot of, there's lack of curbing along a lot of spots. There is a, some steps that...
On Main Street, closer.
Now, once you get down towards the hill, there's a swale on the one side towards Liberty.
That's for water.
Yeah, but there's no curb. And you're just kind of open to the, open to the traffic. On the Durfey's, yeah, Durfey's side, there are steps, which I'd never noticed before.
They're broken down.
Yeah, which is not ADA compliant. And then when you walk past the auto store, that's just a busted up mess.
Right across from the park, too, where, I guess the bank's the only thing left there now. But between there and downtown, it's really unsafe, I think.
I will give my opinion if you want to hear it.
Sure.
It's a lot of money, but it's not going to get any cheaper. In 1980, when we did, they did a revitalization study, it was $33,000 to repave downtown.
You're not going to even hear it. It's not worth it.
Well, concrete, yeah. So, third, well, it was concrete back then. So, it was $33,000 to, to put on, put in concrete and curbing back then. So many years later, it's up to 800.
When was that, the 33?
In 1980.
Wow.
So, these are those tough calls. I know it's expensive, but if, if not now, then when? And then if it's not, it would be, it could be another 40 or 50 years before you can talk about it.
I'm guessing that the select board back then thought 30,000 was a lot.
Probably.
But it's...
I'm sure of it.
When's the grant due?
Um, so the grant, this grant is due on the 30th of this month.
Right. Next week.
Yep, next week.
Which is next year?
What's your pleasure?
And you're, Joe, you're confident that you haven't allocated those funds twice, you know, for anything else?
Yes. So, the, there was a big portion of that coming out of the Mechanic Street project, but that came in under budget by a little more than half. And then for the bridge project that we didn't get funded. So, that money is, this, this money is still here. And we also have to remember, this is, this project is one of those state, federal projects. This won't be done for three to four years.
So, what's the amount again, the, the bottom line amount that's left unfunded?
The funds that would be in the account?
The, the funds that were short. Well, you don't know exactly because you don't know what you're getting for grants.
No, there'd be 40,000 left in that fund if you use 162,000, whatever it is, 100, 100, 100, 100, 61,000. There'd be 40,000 supposedly left in the sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
So, what happens, what happens if the Adam Street bridge job comes through?
At this point, there is no money to, to apply for more grants at large.
That doesn't mean there's not a different angle to get after that Adam Street. I mean, there's state funding to the...
Adam Street is low priority on the projects list. What would, what would the sidewalks, what are the sidewalks?
Sidewalk wasn't even on the priority.
Yeah, but, but I mean, I'm just trying to, I want to use the tool. If you were looking at the sidewalks and if you were prioritizing the sidewalks that are in very rough shape, would, would they be in at least, if not high, moderate? Or are you saying the sidewalks are low, we, we'll just go put a little sack of reed and patch them? I, I mean, I'm just, again, I...
It, it has been called out that this, the sidewalks are, are stopping development.
There's, there's, why would you buy store fundage for that?
I agree. I think it's a, it's a, we did the, we had the revitalization committee and the, and what was the official name of that?
It was the revitalization, Downtown Revitalization Committee?
And I, I mean, we got to show some results. We, every, every 20 or 30 years, we have this committee formed by different citizens, and then we don't do anything.
Well, we're supposed to be doing that part, aren't we?
We're going to do that. That's part, that's, that's still there. That, that's funded as well as in that 162, right?
Parking lot, what do you mean 162?
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the parking lot is, you've got that figured in the sidewalk.
Yes, that's, that's already subtracted on the streets and sidewalks.
Okay. So, we're going to do that.
It all comes.
And I, and I think this is another step. I, I, I think we should at least try.
It's, so just when I'm writing, and let me know if I'm talking too much. Because when writing this grant, there have been studies just recently, along with economic development, you know, chiming in on, on this. It's easy to point to some, to, to point to this project and tell the state, "Look, we've studied this. Our, our experts are telling us this is what's stopping us from growing economically. It's been in our, it's been in our town plan since 2016 at least. And look, even back in 1980, we wanted to do this. Now would be a good time. I, I feel like I can make a strong case for it."
And the other thing, too, is the merchants that are there, the people that own buildings are, are actually doing some improvements right now. The painting looks great, you know, it should, we should show our commitment, at least try.
We have to keep up with the, the infrastructure. Just, it all just crumbles away. And it already, we can see it. All of us can see it now. I think we should try to go forward with it.
What do you need from us?
A motion?
A motion?
No, I'm just going to move this into the next topic.
I could use a motion, and then there's a letter from the board saying, "I rounded it to 162,000."
Okay, so I'll make the motion to use the amount, not to exceed...
162,000.
162,000 in, in matching funds?
From the streets and sidewalks.
From the streets and sidewalks, for, for the downtown sidewalk replacement grant application.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Jeff, were you opposed?
No.
No, no, I was, I was not.
Is it, is it five?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just not vote.
Obstinate?
So, it's five?
Okay. And then the letter of support?
One.
Commentary.
Okay. Do we want a motion for this, too, or not?
Uh, no, no, this is fine with, with the minutes, and then if you sign it, you're perfect, yeah.
Hey, Joe, what, what happens if that project gets funded and comes in over...
800,000.
Over budget?
Um, so we would put out an RFP and hopefully every, the bidders would come in at or under budget. The state does have a, what do you call it? Another app, another program where you can sign up and say, "Hey, we were over, we were, we were, our budget was over by a little bit. Can you give us a little more money?"
Well, there's already contingency figured in there, right?
There's 15% contingency.
So, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that we have no more money in that account?
Very, very little. Large projects, yeah. We're doing a ton of infrastructure. There's a ton of infrastructure.
So, can, can you update the grant sheet to reflect that so that we all know where we are?
Yes. So, there's a grant sheet, kind of a, a chart that I put together that shows what we've applied for and where the match came from and on what day, what date that match was provided. I will update and get that to the board.
So, I think we should stop doing grants because we have no money.
Well, it's, that's short sighted.
No, it isn't, Bob. You don't have the money to, if, if all these projects come in, we don't have any money left.
I gather that. I mean, I get that. I mean, just saying...
And the townspeople are already getting paid at 6 million.
But the same blanket, we're going to stop doing grants is crazy.
Well, right now, you don't have any choice. If you don't have any money to match it with, you don't have any money. If you get something that's over $35,000, you can't do it.
What does BOS mean?
I understand.
Well, wouldn't we discuss the grant before we apply for it and see what's needed to go with it, if there is anything, or?
We're coming up to budget season, too, and we always, we always fund something in there.
I understand that, Bob, but you know, the tax pay, they get hammered, you're going to be hurt. And somewhere, you gotta start looking where you're going.
We are. I don't think, I don't think we're, I think we're doing sound stuff.
All we've done this year is spend.
I guess I'm hoping, too, that our Public Works group can do some work in kind on this and knock that match down. Joe?
No, why not?
No. This, this grant says it's, they, they allow for in kind, but it's a very rare case that they let us do our own work.
Well, in kind, though. Well, let's find out what the in kind is, obviously. If they allow...
Get as much credit for that as you can.
Yes.
Moving on. Server purchase.
Well, we're spending money. So, the board did allocate $7,000 for a server replacement in, in last year's budget.
How much?
7,000. The server came in, let me see, I cut some things out to reduce this price. About, so it came in at 7,300, $7,300. I'll use the, I use $300. If the board approves the 7,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund, which is what I'm requesting, I'll use $300 to, out of our regular budget to make up the difference.
Okay.
I would need a motion.
Yep. I make a motion that we expand seven, not, not to exceed 7,000 for the municipal building reserve fund to purchase the new server.
So, I got 7,300.
The, the board only allocated 7,000 for it. We'll take $300 out of, out of our, out of the regular budget.
That's going to be part of the motion.
That's going to be part of the motion. You're spending money out of the budget.
I spend money out of budget every day.
It's not, it's not out of the, it's not out of, this is just the money we're taking out of the reserve or capital reserve. Not the 300 dollars, is it?
No, that's just...
That's unfunded, that's unbudgeted money. No, it's budgeted money. Not the 300 dollars, Bob. Yes, it is. It's part of the, it's part of the regular budget that they have. You know, never mind. What do you mean, never mind? I mean, what's the problem? Because it's, the money that's in the budget is already allocated for a place where it's got to go. There's no, there's no fat in the budget. No, but, I know, but it's machinery, what do we call it? Spending money we don't have. What line it, what line it is?
It would be machinery and equipment, or, you know.
Well, we, which is money we have, we don't say exactly what we're buying, what we're going to do. We allow them, that, that kind of, it's there. We're not taking, we're not, we're not deficit spending, or I think it's money that we've already approved in the budget. It should be all right. Is there a second? Did we get a second? No, I'm sorry. May I have a second for the motion?
Seconded.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Listers' air and emissions approval.
Okay, this one doesn't cost us any money.
Yay!
I know. This was a tough meeting. So, the listers...
We're not done yet.
So, the, we're, the board is seeing this because the state extended the deadline for the HS 122 form. Normally, these kinds of changes are just processed by the listers before the, what's it called? The big list.
Grand list.
The grand list, thank you. Before the grand list is completed. So, they extended that deadline, the HS 122 deadline was extended, the grand list was finished, and now there's things that need to be repaired or fixed. So, this, I got this yesterday. We need motions to correct the homestead valuation for Joseph Dayton, Carol Moss, Christine Messier, and Linda Sinkowsky, I think I said that wrong.
Can it all be one motion or individual?
The listers actually asked for one motion.
Okay.
And this, sorry to interrupt you, this is because of what the state sent down to us. This is nothing that the listers did or that we did. The state made changes to these properties based on use, and that use is altering what the listers, what the grand list says.
All right. Do you, do you need all the detail of what amount to what amount for each of them?
It would be helpful, yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for that we make the, the listers' adjustments to the grand list for Joseph Dayton, from 34,700 to 172,000. For Carol Moss, from 103,700 to 57,600. For Christian Meschien, from 138,200 to 180,100. And for Linda Sinkowitz, from 135,000 to 118,400.
Do you have a second?
Seconded.
These people know that they're different.
Yep. So, what happened, some of them were paying, so for example, Joe Dayton, he was, his property was somehow split where he was paying non-residential and residential?
I do.
Yeah, but he actually lives here.
I do, too.
Yeah.
Our property, our house, we get charged both.
Yeah, you do because of the apartment.
No, that's separate. That's, the apartment house over there is separate.
Yeah.
But the rest of the stuff is all in our property.
Yep. The same, well, Joe Dayton does not have an apartment. There was an heir through the state with him. Another one, the Meschien and Sinkowitz, they changed some of their property, they changed the percentage of their property that was rental, which changed their...
Do you sign these? I just want, you said Joe went from...
That was a big...
Yeah, that was a big jump. Yeah, like 34, from 34 to 172.
That's a big jump.
That just moved it from his non-res, everything lumped onto his homestead, so his residential valuation, before it was broken out where there was some over here and some over here.
Okay, so it was already there, I mean, in both places, it still is the same, okay.
Yeah, two different buckets now.
I just, just want to make sure he's aware of that.
This is new to me, too, so I'm, I'm still trying to...
And they all know, they've all been notified?
Yep. This is all through the state, and they, they work through the state, and the state lets us know.
Okay. Do we understand what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Anybody jumping in on the parking lot?
Just, just one, I, I know, but just, just, I wanted to note that next Tuesday, on that local option tax, when we come here for the first hearing, right, is it next, it's next Tuesday here, that one there, we're basically, we've sent out the flyer explaining what it is. We're here to listen, people come in to tell us what, how they feel, concerns, or, or people that report. Okay, good, it's all right.
And that's at 7:00?
Yeah, are we going to do that here, or you have, if we get too many people, we're going to, we're going to be very quickly not, not COVID spread.
You think that many people will come?
Not, I, I think Paul is organizing alerts turn out.
Oh, I will set something up between now and Tuesday.
We can either go in the, in the, you know, move the fire truck out, if that's the case. We just need to make sure we have chairs.
Yeah.
Or we could talk to the school, but it would be better to stay here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, round table.
I just have a couple of questions. I don't know the history on the mural that was done down on River Street, how that got paid for and where it came from, but I was wondering about having the old Green Brothers one put up on the, what's the word, what's the park, the Parkview Apartments building where it used to be? How, how'd that come about? I mean, is there any chance that we could get that done?
They're working on it. They're supposed to get a hold of the people that own the building.
Who's they?
The itty bitty committee, or whatever the hell one it is.
Yeah, itty bitties.
On the, on the green block? Yeah, okay, that old Green Brothers sign. Well, then, is the itty bitty committee wanting to work on the email that I sent to you guys about fixing up the little triangle a little bit by Stewards' Bruce sat up?
They'd be, they'd get into it.
I bet they're right ones to talk about.
I think so, because they're the ones that were compared to when they're doing the stuff in the park and stuff.
One other thing, yeah.
So, how do we go about contacting them?
Cindy Donat, the store on Main Street, Cindy Patrick.
Cindy, Judy, Lorraine.
Judy from the...
Yeah.
Seal on it.
Seal on it, yeah.
Do you want me to speak with one of them about that?
Yeah.
What did you mean by triangle?
In front of Stewarts.
In front of Stewarts, but she...
For the yield.
With some flowers and...
Yeah. Oh, oh, oh.
Give it up.
It's just a mess.
Facelift.
Yep. That's all I had.
Okay. I don't think I have a Scott Schill, we're going to discuss that anyways.
Okay.
Just one, I got a phone call again, I'm hearing from more people, the crosswalks that still haven't been painted in the middle of town going, especially the long one going from Dunkin' Donuts over to Laundromat, up by Stewarts. I watched a car fly through the faraway stop. I think some of it was, it didn't look like a person that had been here, no idea, I think, what they're doing, but there's no sign of a crosswalk going over to Stewarts from the side that we, we really...
Jesus, there's a stop sign.
Yeah, but I'm still, but it's another, but the other added thing, when you, when you're actually visibly seeing crosswalks there, I, we, I know we have a ton on our plates, but we're getting to where those, those are a safety issue that we should be doing something.
Oh, we'll get it on the list.
That's all I have.
Jeff?
I think Joe touched on it, but Ray Pankowski did reach out to me. I just wanted to get on the record that he was, he was fairly frustrated and perceived that we haven't done anything about the rattly manhole cover, but Joe assures me that we've done a number of things and, and that he's working on it, continuing to work on the problem. So, I just wanted that on the record.
I still say that he put coal patch on, it'll stop all the, stop the bumps, and it'll stop the... And the one down by me? Down by, yes. That one's got to be filled in. It's terrible. That's a thumper I can, it shakes my house. I'm sure Diane and her mother are getting it even worse than me.
That's all I got.
Okay. The only thing I got is maybe we could have a foot patrol presence for the police around the scarecrows once or twice a night, you know, that they could just, just take a walk. I don't think they have belly clubs anymore, but it'd be nice to see. And the playground. And the playground. That's one I was going to ask. Policy here, isn't our policy that they're supposed to drive over the roads every night?
I don't know if they hit every road, every night?
We only got 26 miles of road.
Yeah.
Eight hours a night.
It's, I'll ask the chief and see what, what they typically do.
Because the situation wouldn't have happened on Scott Schill if their police department had gotten through there. All right. Review the financial reports.
Motion to pay the, the general fund warrant, 230,987 dollars and 61 cents.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And motion to, motion to pay the payroll warrant, 30,536 dollars and 75 cents.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And the...
Go ahead.
And the checkbook balance is 577,768 dollars and 78 cents.
Motion to accept it, I guess. I don't think we'll get that. Information, yeah. All right, now we are going to go to an executive session if there's a motion that way. You've got it all?
Yeah, I'll take pass at it. I'll make a motion based, there's two different motions. The first motion, I'll make a motion based on the advice of council, premature public disclosure of attorney-client communications concerning continued maintenance of Lewis Lane and the negotiations of any agreements relating to the continued maintenance is likely to substantially disadvantage the town, given that it will entail a discussion concerning statutory duties and liabilities involving public highways and options pertaining to Lewis Lane.
They all have been motioned.
The lawyer said so. He did.
And the, and I'll give you that.
You need to motion that second, and then vote.
I need a second, I need a second for that one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next motion is to go into executive session to confer with council remotely concerning maintenance of Lewis Lane and options going forward with town manager Joe Gunter to join the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I have one last motion, and that is to go into executive session for attorney-client communications involving personnel of 1 DSA 313A4 involving Scott Schill.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into executive session as soon as the TV breaks down.